It's six o'clock, a couple of minutes after six, so we'll start the regular meeting of the Garfield Township Planning Commission, call it to order, and our first order of business is reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And may we have a roll call, please?
Certainly, Agustinelli.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Yuli.
Here.
Fudge.
Here.
Racine.
Here.
And who am I missing? I think that was it, right? And Robertson and DeGud are absent and excused for now.
Okay, thank you. First order of business on the agenda is public comment, and we actually have a couple of public comments. There's one right now, there's one at the end of the meeting, and we actually have two public hearings scheduled for this evening, one about the proposed major amendment to the PUD for the Grand Traverse Bay Y, and another for a proposed rezoning request by Smith Brothers. If you are here to talk about either of those things, you're free to talk now, but it probably would be more effective if you talked to us as we're dealing with that agenda, it'll be fresher in our memory. But whatever you want to talk to us about, anybody that would like to come forward and tell us some things right now, please feel free to do so, we just ask that you state your name and address. And seeing nobody, we'll close public comment, the first one. Next on the agenda is to review and approve the agenda, and if there's any conflicts of interest, we need to hear about that. Kara?
Just want to restate for the record that I am an employee of Grand Traverse County, which has contracts with the YMCA, but we had discussed it previously, and the commission didn't find any conflict previously, just wanted to make sure that was disclosed for the record.
Thanks. Anyone else got anything, conflict or motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have one item. Oh, that's right, we have to modify the agenda, I'm sorry.
Staff is requesting that we add an item under Other Business, it's the current application that you're considering right now for Ivy Brook, which is a minor amendment to the Lake Point PUD, so we would like to just give you an update on that application under Other Business.
So Molly, do you want to modify your motion to approve the agenda as just now amended?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the agenda with current application for Ivy Brook added to Other Business.
Support. Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next on the agenda is a review of the minutes from our October 29th meeting. Are there any proposed additions or changes to those? Make a motion to accept the minutes. Is there support? Support. It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes as presented for October 29th, 2025. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries as well. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. John, looks like we have some correspondence on our table this evening?
Yes, there are actually three different parts to the correspondence. First off, at the bottom, there is a memorandum from maybe November, dated November 6th. It's in addition to the 931 dual road conditional rezoning, it's the offer of conditions, so it didn't quite make it in the packet, so we submitted that the day the packet went out. So that is provided for you. We also amended the recommended action regarding that particular application, which will be introduced this evening. There are 10 communications, letters, and emails regarding the Grand Traverse Bay YMCA Phase II Special Use Permit Major Amendment, so those items are for that, and then there is one email regarding the High Tops from a resident on Woodward.
Thanks, John. And I think in our packet, I see it, you had included a correspondence for our information of your note to the planner on behalf of Blair Township's proposed master plan amendment?
Correct.
Great, thanks. All right, next up is reports. Molly, any town board report this evening?
Yeah, town board's been working on the budget, we should wrap that up this month. And then also, our planning commission and township received an award at the annual planning dinner for our work on the Placet at Carriage Commons, so.
Nice.
Nice. Should've brought that up.
We brought that, yep. This was, yeah, from the Michigan Townships Association to the Planning Commission and Planning Department for that process. It was, what was the actual name of the, not a development, what was the name of the award? Forget, but it's from Michigan Townships Association. Chris Barshaf, the manager, and Joe McManus, the supervisor, gave a little overview, and Molly and I were there, so if anyone wants to see this, it's in our office.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Molly?
No, that's it.
Okay. Bob, any zoning board of appeals report this evening?
No, we did not have a meeting, thank you.
Okay. Is there any report about Parks and Recreation Commission?
They have not met since the last meeting, their next one is December. The town board will actually be looking at something that Parks had been looking at regarding mountain biking portion of the Commons Natural Area, so they'll be looking at that in a couple weeks.
Thanks, Steve. For the Joint Planning Commission, we haven't met since October, I think we have a special meeting coming up next week.
Correct, there is a special meeting for the Joint Planning Commission a week from today on November 19th, it's going to be held in this room at this location, and that starts at 5:15 PM, and that's a special meeting, it's regarding the Historic Barnes Park.
Staff report.
Our staff report to the town board, or that will also go to the town board, is submitted in writing, and covers most of what we've been working on at Planning Commission, a handful of the administrative reviews, being that it's now November, it's starting to slow down a little bit, but wrapping up some ones that have been submitted. And otherwise, I was also going to mention the MTA award, so thank you, Molly, for covering that. I also attended a workshop at Traverse Connect on grant writing, which the township has done some from time to time, I know that probably the most common one would be the Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund, staff before us worked on grants for the township, we worked on one for the Commons, but there are other grant opportunities out there, and now that the township has a CIP, we have projects identified kind of earlier on in the process, Planning Commission was part of preparing that CIP, so trying to learn more a little bit about the whole grant process, what types of grants are, is the township eligible for, where to find them, how to apply for them, but now that we have a CIP, we can identify projects that might be eligible for some of those. I learned there's a whole grant world that some people, that is their entire job, so kudos to them.
Steve, could you explain what CIP is?
CIP is a capital improvement program. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Anything else for our staff report?
That's all we got.
All right. Moving along, next item is unfinished business. First item is 6A, Planning Department Report 2025-126, follow-up on the High Tops CP Plan Shopping Site Plan Review.
Yeah, so in your packet is our PD report regarding the application, just to recap on this, since it's been away from the Planning Commission for a while, why there's been some additional reviews going on. This was initially presented to the Planning Commission at the meeting on May 14th of this year, and then later, there was some additional discussion on it, meeting in June, in July, and then there was a, the application was tabled so that there could be an acoustical impact assessment conducted. The applicant did have that assessment completed, and then provided an escrow for a, essentially a peer review of that acoustical impact assessment that was completed last month, so that has been provided to you, so you have both the initial acoustical impact assessment and then the peer review, and this is for the proposed High Tops Bar, Restaurant, and Nightclub in the former Yonkers space, so this is a, utilizing roughly about three quarters of the former Yonkers store to establish a bar and restaurant along with the nightclub. So the acoustical impact assessment that did come back from the peer review did identify some items that probably should be clarified within that report, mainly, probably the, in my conversation with ABD Engineering and Design, probably the two kind of big areas are the addressing some of the low frequency, and those were concerns that were previously identified by the Planning Commission, and then also what's mentioned is noise transmission loss regarding the roof construction indoors and so forth. So I did talk with the applicant who's here this evening, and they are working to follow up in response to those. I did provide some comments also in our report, in addition to that, regarding the security analysis recommendations, they did provide to us today a copy of the policy and guidelines that the applicant will use, and they intend to apply all of those recommendations to their operation that they are proposing for the nightclub and the bar and restaurant. There's also in the comments there, we have not heard back from the sheriff's office, I will follow up on that, they did receive all that information to review regarding this application. There are some other minor site plan items that are identified in the report. At this point, I think it's an opportunity for discussion by the Planning Commission, particularly in relationship to the acoustical impact assessment, and then any other issues that might be needed to be addressed by the applicant, but it seems for the most part the application is moving forward, and I think these are things that seem to be that should be able to be addressed through the remainder of this process.
Commissioners, questions, comments?
Well, we've been concerned from the beginning about that low frequency, and I'm glad it was addressed in the report here, and hopefully we get some information back on how we're going to mediate that in some way, so, but the rest of the applications, it fits, so.
I think I've expressed some questions and concerns in the past about the potential for noise emanating out the back door at times after like 10:00 PM when it needs to get quiet for the neighbors, and can you maybe share with us, John, the latest information you've got about what's going to be done so that that shouldn't be a concern, or if it still does need to be a concern?
Well, I think the, well, and actually, the applicant might be better versed, because they just received information today on that, but they've talked about how the rear entry to the building would be limited. One of the key recommendations of the security consultant was that it really kind of be split in terms of the orientation of the users of that, so for instance, the employees would all be at the rear of that site, and then customers or visitors to the bar, restaurant, the nightclub would all be at the front side, so that's mainly for security, but also has a potential to reduce the amount of impact in terms of noise, so the rear side of the venue would be limited towards employees, and access in there would be limited, so it wouldn't be necessarily just like a simple walk-through. They've also instituted some additional double doors for exiting to the rear, but I think those are things that if they're implemented, should be able to be addressed.
Yeah, that remains a concern of mine, I'll want to be satisfied that that's not a problem, and I appreciate if the doors are only going to be used by employees and not customers, that is a significant reduction in the amount of time the doors are going to be open, but even if they're open only once, if there's loud noise gets out after 10 o'clock, I don't think that's appropriate, and I'd like to know how we're going to make sure that the noise from inside doesn't get outside, even for a short time when the doors opened late at night. But it doesn't sound like we're needing to deal with that this evening, we're going to deal with that apparently.
Well, that, you know, it might be appropriate for the applicant, because that, to talk.
Mr. Beeler.
How are you? Phil Beeler, 7525 Cedar Run Road. We talked about that, and we've addressed them last week or so, we decided to do that foolproof, we just, from, I think the noise ordinance was 10 to 2, or after 10 o'clock on the weekdays and 11 on the weekends, I would just staff a member at the back doors and we'd go out every day.
So the door will not be opened?
We'll still do a lockout, so nobody can come in, but I'll also have a staffed person at the center double doors, so even if a venue or even on a slow night, nobody can exit out the back at all. So that'd be staffed every day from 10 to 2 on the weekdays and 11 to 2 on the weekends.
Is 11 the correct hour for the weekends? I don't remember the zoning, the sound ordinance time.
I think it was 11 to 2 on the weekends and 10 to 2 on the weekdays, or I could have it wrong, but.
Well, whatever it is.
We'll check with that, yeah.
Okay.
Does that include that staff would not be able to exit out that back door as well?
Well, there's a side door that's going to be exit to the, but there won't be no traffic.
I'm not sure.
There's a side entrance for employees that as they go, I mean, it's not going to be a crowd of employees leaving, but throughout the time, they're going to have to go out the back. But we still had implemented, like in my policy, as far as, you know, the no talking and the route that I have on there to exit, to keep the sound down, and no headlights going on anybody's.
Yeah, I guess staff has just received something today which we haven't seen, so I'm not sure what those plans show yet, but.
I have an excellent exit route along the building, so they can't go towards adjacent neighborhood.
The employees?
Yes.
Yeah, I remember that. My concern has always been, when the door gets open, there's going to be sounds coming from outside or from inside the venue.
Well, it'd be closed, at the end, we know when the venue's over.
During the hours, the 10 o'clock.
Well, they won't be closed, but employees won't be leaving until the business is closed, and usually a concert venue doesn't go past 11 or 10. It's around the time they stop.
We could probably deal with that in conditions as necessary at the end, we just need to make sure that there aren't openings of that door when there's loud noise inside still going on.
Right.
As far as I'm concerned.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's what we would work towards, and that's what I mentioned in there, is just essentially an itemized list, and Phil's provided some of that information today, but just so that we would probably embed that as part of a condition of the approval, so that it's an agreement between the applicant and understanding that what they're providing there will address the standards of the ordinance, and I think.
Sorry, so the big double doors, those won't get opened past, the employees will be going out a smaller door on the side, so there shouldn't be any sound coming out. The main doors will be closed all the time after 10.
Yeah, what you pointed to, Steve, it's actually, it's, you just provided me the information.
Okay.
This afternoon, there's a separate talent and equipment entrance.
Okay.
And off to one side, and then employee food and beverage delivery entrance off to the other, so it wouldn't be those double doors in the back.
Is staff still recommending the motion that's directed here?
Yeah, I think just because of the extent of this, and we'd like to see the response from regarding the acoustical impact assessment, that it would be appropriate to essentially provide all the information and address it and present it in their report to you. We just want to give you opportunity to give any feedback prior to that being presented at December 10th meeting.
Anybody else have questions or feedback you want to share? Molly?
Yeah, on the roof, our sound engineers kind of made a deal about the roof, are you thinking about changing the roof? Do you know whether it's?
Well, I know the landlords said that they would put an extra layer on the roof, but anything that might be, needed to be done past that, I would just do on the inside.
Inside.
Because I'd probably still have to have a sound testing when it's done, the building is done, because it's just a model testing.
Do we know on that roof whether it is a metal roof or concrete?
It's not concrete, it's a metal deck with foam.
With foam, okay. Okay, thanks.
Anybody else with any questions or comments, or if not, staff had drafted a possible motion that we could deal with?
I'll make the motion, the application, SPR 2025-06, submitted by Philip Beeler, for a bar, restaurant, and nightclub on parcel number 05-014-049-08, located at 1776 South Garfield Avenue, be tabled to allow the applicant to address the staff comments in Planning Department Report Number 2025-126.
Any further discussion on that motion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
So we'll see you back whenever you and staff have done some more, and gotten some more input, I guess, from the consultant.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is item 6B, Planning Department Report 2025-127, Review of Draft Findings of Fact for the Olson Property rezoning request.
At the last meeting, the public hearing was held for this rezoning by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission directed staff to prepare findings of fact, so that's the, the findings are provided in our report. Just to recap, this is a large rezoning parcel of about 171 acres, it has been subdivided into four primary parcels at this time, one of them, the parcel A would be R3 multifamily, parcel B would be IG general industrial, parcel C CG general commercial, and then parcel D IG general commercial, or general industrial, and then there is a, what the development plan that's been provided by the applicant would be further divided as development would occur. There's phases that are identified, the first phase is essentially parcels A and B, which is on the west side of the site, that's the northerly parcel, which would be multifamily, R3, and then the southerly parcel, IG general industrial, with the north-south road that would be connected between Meadow Lane and Rennie School Road. And then there would be, the other parcels could be subdivided, they're showing an indication there could be some smaller parcels, those could be done through land divisions or through site condominium process. But generally, the findings, I know at the public hearing, there was concern from some of the property owners to the west of the site, in terms of what the impact may be on both the R3 multifamily residential and the IG industrial, so there are provisions in the site plan review standards of the ordinance for those, the impact of any of those on the neighboring properties, so for instance, anything in the R3 apartments and so forth would be through a special use permit process, so there are standards in there that, making sure that the use is designed and constructed and operated so that it's harmonious and compatible with the adjacent uses, so there would be things that could be inserted in there, such as screening, fencing, landscaping, buffers, setbacks, those types of things, to ensure that there's, the impact is minimized or mitigated. Same thing with the IG, also has an overall standard in terms of that, there should be attempts to reduce the impact of any industrial uses on the site and the surrounding area. So there are some provisions within the ordinance so that when development actually goes forward, that those potential impacts are addressed. In terms of the findings of fact, there's the consistency with the master plan, which I think the essential part to the application has, is the development plan, which that information is provided to you, along with attachments, but we felt with the overall development plan for the site and what they have planned in terms of allowing for some light industrial, some general commercial uses, kind of developing a business park format along with the housing, does fit the master plan, which has a designation for a mixed-use center, which does recognize future land uses such as large areas with a mix of commercial, residential, public semi-public uses, so we felt that this really kind of does fit what the master plan identified, and is, quite frankly, is going to be a more efficient and effective way to subdivide and develop land as opposed to kind of some of the strip development that we've seen along US 31, so this is definitely a more planned approach. That development plan also indicates what the proposals are in terms of future land divisions, the extension of two roadways, I mentioned the one north-south that essentially is an extension of Stadium Drive to the south of Rennie School, and goes all the way up to Meadow Lane, and then there's an east-west road that is essentially an extension of Blue Star from across the east side of 31. So those, the development plan really identifies that there are changing conditions planned for this area, there are certain aspects that are in there in terms of providing water sewer to the site, combined storm sewer system, the applicant has been and continues to work with. The applicant has been and continues to work with the township engineer in terms of the phasing and staging of the various improvements, because it's quite extensive effort here to extend the water sewer to the site, but this will make the development more efficient and effective in terms of its of its implementation in accordance with the development plan. So we do have the, we found that the findings of fact that are there, we're recommending that they be adopted, and then an overall recommendation to the Township Board under rezoning application for approval.
Well, thank you, John. And thank you, John, for filling in for me, and I apologize to all the rest of you. I was sitting at home enjoying my dinner, and then I cracked open the packet to take another look at it and saw six o'clock! And I remembered that I think I made the motion, but then failed to change my calendar, my calendar, yeah. So, here we are. Here I am. Thoughts and comments from the commission regarding the application before us? John?
Looks pretty straightforward to me, and I think all of the conditions that needed to be met, according to the findings of fact, looks like they have been met. To me.
I concur.
Well, if we're all in agreement, we could, anyone like to make the motion regarding the recommended actions?
Okay, I'll read this one. Make a motion to recommend to the Township Board the Application Z 2025-01 submitted by?
Oh, we gotta do the first one. Sorry, Bob. We gotta do the top one first.
Why don't I do the first one first?
Sure, if you'd like.
Okay. Let's try this again. Motion that the finding of fact for Application Z 2025-01 submitted by the Olson Foundation, excuse me, to rezon parcel 05-032-001-07, and 05-032-001-06, located at the northeast corner of Rennie School Road and North US 31 South from the current configuration zoning of GC residential, G1 general industrial. Oops, I skipped a line. CG general commercial and R3 multifamily residential to a new configuration of R3 multifamily residential, 1G general industrial and CG general commercial in accordance with the proposed development plan as presented to the Planning Commission in the Planning Commission Report 2025-127, and being made a part of this motion to be adopted.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Fudge, support by Augustinelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same. The motion passes.
Okay, I'll also, excuse me, make a motion to recommend to the Township Board that Application Z 2025-01 submitted by the Olson Foundation to rezon parcels 05-032-001-07, and 05-002-001-08 located at the northwest corner of Rennie School Road and North US 31 South from its current configuration zoning of CG general commercial and R3 multiple family residential to a new configuration of R3 multifamily residential, 1G general industrial, and CG general commercial in accordance with the proposed development plan be approved.
Support.
We have another motion from Fudge and support by Augustinelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same. The motion passes. And with that, we will move on from Olson Property Resoning Request to our next item of unfinished business, PD 2025-128, Airport Gateway Master Plan Amendment Recommendation.
I'll have Steve cover this. Let him get down to.
So I gotta find it in the. Sorry, this would have been a much clearer map for what the rezoning was, but this is, findings, you have seen this one before. This looks like papers at this point. All right, easier to get through. Survey. Should be after the survey? Okay. Okay, there we go.
Okay. Sorry about the delay. So at the past few study sessions, we've been looking at a proposed amendment to the master plan for what is described as an airport gateway. And I want to kind of zoom out a little bit, too, since this is the proposed, kind of forwarding this to the Township Board, what actually constitutes the master plan amendment. But also, just as a little background, we had the public input session from 5:30 to 6:30 on October 9th, October 29th, right before the last Plan Commission study session. We summarized kind of in brief comments. A lot of the comments were specifically about traffic related to South Airport Road and Town Line Road. Some of this could be handled through once there is an actual development proposal for that site, which would be reviewed. We did not receive any comments, to my knowledge, from the road commission themselves, but they would be the ones coordinating anything regarding that, both of those roads are county roads. But otherwise, other comments included commenting on just wayfinding in that area. There were some people turning around in residential driveways, a few things like that. But otherwise, what we wanted to comment on, since this item is on the agenda for proposing the amendment to the Township Board, the specific components of that, and there's really three things. The description, and I wanted to pull up the full Township master plan to comment where it would actually be added to the master plan. So this is the master plan adopted on July 9th, 2024, last year by the Township Board. And where is the part on future land use? It would be in here. So there's, within the master plan, there's descriptions of all of the future land use categories. So we've been talking about this area at the corner of Town Line and South Airport Road as a mixed-use area. The airport gateway is just sort of the name of it, because all of the mixed-use areas in the master plan have just a name of describing the node. Some of them are from things that are well-known, like Green Hill, Logan's Landing. This one just needed a name, so we talked about kind of the concept of the airport gateway, but that really, in context of the master plan, is just describing that area. So the proposal to add it as a mixed-use neighborhood designation in the master plan would simply be to hear all the mixed-use neighborhoods as identified in the master plan. Brookside Commons is one. Cedar Run Campus, which is kind of the Cedar Run West Front area. Green Hill. McCray Hill Base, which is really Hartman McCray Hill around US 31. Rennie Hill slash Veterans Drive, which is this portion of Veterans Drive, kind of just south of Township Hall. And M72 West Bay, the little corner of the township, just west of 72 and 22, New Roundabout. So the draft language that has been being reviewed by the Plan Commission, and we have some amendments to that based on Plan Commission feedback at the last couple of meetings, would be to insert it into that portion of the master plan. And staff did add some language. Area to the west of, this is sort of the area we talked about, but we also kind of encompassed the area to the west. So we propose some draft language. The area to the west has an existing established industrial development pattern, including parcels with frontage on West South Airport Road, shown within this dash line. However, if the development pattern were to change in the future, this area would most reasonably be included as part of the airport gateway area with redevelopment proceeding according to the guiding principles, which all the mixed-use areas have these guiding principles. So basically to say, if there are any changes, to include it in that kind of extended area. Otherwise, I think the draft language stayed fairly the same as to what it was. So that's one component of the actual proposed amendment. And then there would be two updates to maps. So the future land use map, which this area is right here, currently is designated as high-density residential, so redesignate that as a mixed-use neighborhood, along with all the other ones designated as mixed-use neighborhood. And then the other map to update as part of this amendment would be the non-motorized plan, which would include a few things. Include a shared use path on the south side of South Airport between Town Line and Garfield Road. This kind of connects to other, the non-motorized plan showing sidewalks on points further west. East Bay Township has plans for non-motorized connections between this point and trails on Three Mile, which connect to the Tart Trail and other points that direction. So include a shared use pathway in the non-motorized plan on that side of the road. And that would include updating a plan for a sidewalk that had it right there. Update from sidewalk to shared use path on the north side, which would include just a small portion up to the airport property. Everything else on the north side is airport property and in the city at that point. So it's out of our jurisdiction. And then also at a sidewalk on the west side of Town Line, South Port, or South Airport to Holcomb, basically to include the extent of this mixed-use neighborhood area and provide connection for that and the residents there to any future non-motorized facilities in that area. So that is, the material's proposed as a master plan amendment, recommend for distribution, so. Plan Commissioners have any thoughts? Any further changes before there's a draft motion to forward it to the Township Board?
Well, first, let's welcome Joe.
I forgot all about the change.
Well, Joe, I, too, forgot. I beat you here by 10 minutes. And if I recall correctly, maybe I made the motion to go to 6 o'clock and you seconded it? So that said, is there any further discussion regarding the amendment to the zoning, excuse me, to the master plan? Molly?
Just a question. If, if it should happen that there are changes to that industrial piece that we are now including in this as a possible change, move into the mixed use, what would happen to those businesses? Any, what's the upside to them, or, you know, what would be the changes?
I think it was just in discussions we've had, acknowledging that some of those parcels have frontage along South Airport Road, which has a little bit more visibility. Some of these lots, as designed for industrial compared to like when new industrial parks come in, are a little bit smaller. It certainly doesn't mandate anything. I think it's just more like if there is redevelopment, since it's kind of adjacent to something we're already looking at, both mixed use and where there's like design considerations, like having cross-connection, fewer curb cuts, to kind of link that all together if that opportunity arises. If it doesn't, then it just is what it is.
Okay, thank you.
I think the option there is that if they want to maintain industrial, light industrial operations, they can. But if it was going to be something that would be more conforming to the airport gateway, they have that option. So it really kind of expands their options beyond what's currently there. So it's a, it's a way to, if the airport gateway starts to expand and we see that there's, you know, additional parcels that would better fit into that whole airport gateway concept, this would be kind of the expansion area.
Thank you.
Any other thoughts?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Please do.
I'll make a motion that we recommend to the Township Board to distribute the proposed draft amendment to the Garfield Township Master Plan to local units of government and agencies for the 42-day public comment period as required by the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. Support.
All right, we have a motion by Racine, support by Klein. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same. Motion passes.
That'll go to the Township Board for the November 25th meeting, so we figure that the 42-day period would probably start the next day once we send those out. Shortly thereafter. So it'll be wrapped up in January.
Perfect. And I believe the Planning Commission does, does the Planning Commission do a public hearing after that? Or the Township Board does the public, Planning Commission does a public hearing? So there will be further follow-up on this, but.
Well, shall we move on to our next item of business, public hearings? Although we need to wait a few minutes, don't we?
So we did move the meeting to 6:00 at the last meeting, although we had already noticed the public hearings to be at 7:00. And as we've seen, not everyone knew the meeting was at 6:00. So we do have, I think, it can be up to the Planning Commission's discretion, but there's other business that can be handled, like the new business you could move if desired, I believe. And we also added an item for other business as well.
What was the item that got added?
Lake Point PUD Amendment, Ivy Brook Update.
Lake Point PUD Amendment, okay. And that was added as a new business, Item B?
No, it was Number 10.
Other business.
Other business, thank you. Well, does anybody object if we move on to Item Number 8, New Business, PD 2025-131, 931 Dual Road Conditional Resoning Request? And it's just an introduction, which will more than likely fill our 10 minutes. All right, then, go ahead, guys.
Yeah, so you received, actually, if you recall, there was a conceptual review that we had earlier this year for 931 Dual Road. This is located on the south side of Dual Road. It's essentially behind 3066 Garfield, which is where there was a commercial district housing development that was approved recently. And so the applicant, who's the owner at 931 Dual Road, was interested in converting their existing building there into a duplex. And so at the conceptual review, there was kind of discussions of that and kind of the route that was seen as appropriate would be to consider it as a commercial district housing development under the conditional, through the conditional rezoning process. So the applicant submitted the application. We do have, like as I mentioned, as an added item in correspondence is the offer of conditions that is provided by the applicant for conditional rezoning application. And essentially what they're requesting is a commercial district housing development for this location under the CG general commercial zoning. All other uses would not be permitted at this, under this. All other uses would not be permitted at this, under this offer of conditions. And so essentially, this kind of is like another added commercial district housing development, which was approved towards the west. This one is kind of backing up to that location. As you recall, when we talked about dual road, there are quite a few single-family homes that are still in existence there, along with some of the mixed, light industrial uses that are on that road. So it's kind of an area that's still within some type of transition in terms of the commercial district housing development. It really, you know, kind of dovetails in terms of that, what else is being provided there in terms of the residential. So it kind of seems like it kind of mixes into that area fairly well. At this point, it's an introduction. We did provide an amended or revised recommended action. It was just to clarify that we did receive the actual offer of conditions from the applicant. So the recommended action to go through this process is for to schedule the public hearing. This is a conditional rezoning application, so it also does ultimately require a public hearing at the township board level, and then approval, or at least consideration for approval by the township board.
Questions or concerns from the commission? Hearing none. Would anybody like to make a motion regarding the recommended action? And maybe drag that motion out for seven or eight minutes?
Applicants here as well, if you have any questions for the applicant.
I'll make the motion, and then if it doesn't take seven minutes, we can go on to item ten.
Very good.
I'll make the motion, the application Z twenty-twenty-five-zero-three, submitted by Melissa Riggs Howard and James Howard, to rezon parcel number zero-five-zero-one-three-zero-three-zero-zero, located at nine thirty-one dual road, from its current zoning of IG general industrial to CG general commercial with conditions. Be scheduled for a public hearing for the December tenth, twenty-twenty-five Planning Commission regular meeting.
Support.
Is there any further discussion? I actually have one point of discussion. Oh, that was the revised, you read the revised motion. Never mind. Thank you. I don't have any point of discussion. If there's no other discussion, would, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same? Motion passes. All right, and our next item of other business then is the Lake Point Development. That's an update?
Update, and something we just received pretty much right before the meeting. The applicants indicated that they were, so as part of the PUD application, they need to get the written support of, is I think sixty percent of either owners or owners of sixty percent of the land that was discovered through reviewing the PUD and plan development requirements. They basically informed us they were unable to get enough support. They are getting out of the, they had signed a lease, they're getting out of that. And we said we'd forward that on to the planning commission, basically like as a notice of like withdrawing the application. So this was one where I think just there were concerns when we talked at planning commission about kind of the impacts of things around it, based on where it was, the intensity of what was proposed, use of kind of a private road, when they also didn't control that or have the support of that particular property owner. So it's one that like, something a little bit smaller could work if they find a location that doesn't have those restraints on it, it certainly could work somewhere else. But, yeah, we just received that, and we said we'd forward that on, and that is indication that they're to withdraw that application. We also looked, the last time we had a withdrawal, we actually had a motion, basically that the withdrawal of the application was accepted. I don't know if that's required, or if we just acknowledge that?
Yeah, I don't think you're required to do a motion, but it's just something that we just, because it's an active application, it's just that we, you know, motion to accept the, or recognizing the applicant withdrawing the application.
What's that? Do you happen to have that, PD?
It would be PUD, do we have it in a previous, in minutes? That would be, yeah. Can we take, can we find five minutes to get to seven to find the application number of that one?
The monthly report should have it in there.
That doesn't have the numbers in it.
I don't think you need the numbers.
Well, if we had the title, that would be fine.
Just say the Lake Point PUD Minor Amendment for Ivy Brook Academy.
Yep. So Lake Point PUD Ivy Brook Academy. Ivy Brook.
Academy Minor Amendment.
Academy Minor Amendment. So it would be a motion to accept the withdrawal of Lake Point PUD Ivy Brook Minor Amendment.
I think that is sufficient, yeah.
Anyone like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion, the way you described it.
All right, I'll support it.
All right, we have a motion by Robertson and support by Augustinelli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same? All right, and I guess we will enter into an approximately four-minute recess. Okay. All right. Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, folks, for bearing with us. And I'm seeing seven o'clock on the clock now, so we will go ahead and proceed with the public hearing for PD twenty-twenty-five-one-twenty-nine, Grand Traverse Bay YMCA Phase Two, Special Use Permit Major Amendment, Public Hearing.
So you've received introduction for the special use permit. It's an amendment to the existing special use permit for the Grand Traverse Bay YMCA. You received that last month and scheduled the public hearing. So this is a proposal here where you have an existing recreational facility, eighty-four-thousand-plus-square-feet recreational facility, storage building, two soccer fields, and three hundred and That's currently on site. This is a request for an additional twenty thousand-plus-square-foot addition to the existing residential facility, and the construction of a hundred and twenty-one parking spaces. So by and large, this is an existing site. It's been operating for quite some time now. It's in addition, it makes some adjustments to the configuration of the site, but by and large, still figures in terms of its operation. There was information, we went through the completeness review, addressed all the items. There are some existing access drives on there for metro fire purposes that will have to remain in place. But the only item that we had that we were just looking for that will, could be a condition of approval is a lighting plan, or any amendments to the existing lighting plan on the site. But this is a special use permit, so part of that process is to have an introduction, which was conducted last month. This month is the public hearing, and should it move forward, would be consideration of findings of fact at a subsequent meeting of the planning commission.
The applicant is here, if there's any questions or comments.
Okay. Does the planning commission have any questions for the applicant? Could we go ahead, go ahead, Joe?
Just quickly, I think staff covered in the report, what I understood the proposal was, a new additional building and more parking spaces. In the correspondence that's on our table, it looks like a lot of folks have written emails to the staff indicating their support for the project, but also some reference to an addition of a safe improved crossing at Wyatt Road. And I don't think I was aware of that as part of the proposal, but maybe the applicant, if they're here, can talk a little bit about that if they're planning on doing something. And if not, maybe we'll learn more about that from the public.
Andrew Page, twenty-six twenty-five Old Barn Road, president and CEO of the YMCA. In relation to, that is not part of our project at all. We most recently had the service drive on the backside of the YMCA. We had to widen that, and we had to put some pavement in in certain areas at the requirement of the fire department, but that's as far as it's gotten. You can see that we have a sidewalk that extends out in front of our property, but it ends right where our property ends, at the, at the, at the service drive. Thank you.
Does staff have any thoughts on that issue?
So this is an amendment to the special use permit, so you are looking at the entire site from, even though it's, there's just an addition, it is an existing special use permit, so it does, the standards that apply to whether it's a new or an amendment to a special use permit still apply to this particular site. So it is something that potentially could be considered, but, you know, there is existing site circulation on the site. You know, there was initial improvements that were made for that operation. It's something that at least, you know, potentially could be considered.
Okay. And if it were something to be considered, probably the most recent precedent, or at least something to look at, would be Ridge forty-five and Beta, because these were both recently, either Ridge forty-five was amended and Beta was reviewed, to have that crosswalk across La Fragne. Obviously, different uses, but Beta being a, something that you expect members of the public to access, as with this, you would expect members of the public to access, connecting to residential on the other side, in this case, a trail on the other side. I believe that trail, so this one that ends here, that might be part of a safe routes to school, because it goes on that part of Silver Lake up to at least the light and connects to other trails in that area. So the crossing would really connect this to this, and then this, that's already on the Y's property, loops around, connects to the Buffalo Ridge Trail. So it would provide some connectivity. And in the case of Ridge forty-five and Beta, I believe it was in both of their conditions. And at least Ridge is a special use permit. So if there's similar language or similar reasoning, we could take a look at that as to how that was done. But for the broader context, that's what was kind of showing as a proposed connection.
Okay. Are there any other thoughts or concerns at this point, or should we open it up for a public hearing? All right, we'll open it up for a public hearing, and anyone who has any comments regarding the proposed YMCA special use permit revision, please step forward and make your comments, state your name and your address clearly, please.
Patricia Bauer, four-two-three-seven Summer Hill Road. I live just, if, well, my house isn't on the map, but it's pretty close to being on the map there. And we bike, we walk, we belong to the Y. It has been long my concern that there's going to be a tragedy at that intersection. The speed limit is fifty-five miles an hour. There is no sign, when I go, when I'm going north and I want to turn left onto Wyatt to go into my subdivision, there's no sign that says do not pass on the shoulder. So people, because they're going so fast, coming into Traverse City, they're coming right behind you, and they're all passing on the shoulder. And they may be people standing there waiting to cross with their bikes or on foot. And it's really dangerous. I've spoken here at the commission meeting about this once before, I've talked to the road commission. I know you can't change likely the speed limit, but it's fifty-five miles an hour there, and people are walking to and from the schools, people are biking, it's really unsafe. And when you think about the expansion, with how many more cars are going to be going there, I strongly support that we do something about that crosswalk. And please tell me how to do it, if there's something else I could do. I've talked to the road commission, I've talked to MDOT. I was told by the road commission, see if I couldn't get a collection in my neighborhood to put a speed limit sign up on Wyatt. But, you know, I haven't had very good success, so I'm really hoping for some direction. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you for your comment.
Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Ben Pearson, and I live at four-one-two-five Summer Hill Road, that's actually in the bottom-left corner of this picture, so it's about a five-minute walk from the YMCA. I'm here today to express my support for the YMCA's proposed expansion, and to also endorse an improved crosswalk at this intersection that we're now speaking about. My wife and I, Emily, we moved to this neighborhood three years ago with our toddler. We immediately joined the YMCA, and two factors weighed extremely heavily into our decision to live in this neighborhood. The first is the ability to walk or bike to many of our daily needs, and the second is the close proximity to this Y, which we knew we would use frequently as a young family. Today, we feel very fortunate to live in a place where we can easily leave our car at home and reach the YMCA, we can reach our child's school, he goes to the Montessori that's nearby. We reach several grocery stores and many other destinations all around Traverse City, all using the Buffalo Ridge Trail. And we found tremendous value in the YMCA's programs, especially the child watch, the youth programs. We really love having this within our neighborhood. And just four months ago, we welcomed our second son, so we're looking for many, many more years of using the facilities in this area. And that's why I'm here to support this expansion, because it, you know, it helps more residents enjoy these benefits. But, you know, with an expansion comes more traffic, and, you know, this, I'll echo all the sentiments we just heard before me. I see children, I see seniors, I see parents with strollers crossing this intersection and darting in between traffic that is moving at very high rates of speed, and I think it's just very dangerous and unsustainable as this continues to grow. So a safer crossing would make it easier for hundreds of nearby households to walk to the Y, just like we do all the time. all using the Buffalo Ridge Trail. And we found tremendous value in the YMCA's programs, especially the Child Watch, the youth programs. We really love having this within our neighborhood. And just four months ago, we welcomed our second son, so we're looking for many, many more years of using the facilities in this area. And that's why I'm here to support this expansion, because it, you know, it helps more residents enjoy these benefits. But you know, with an expansion comes more traffic, and you know, this, I'll echo all the sentiments we just heard before me. I see children, I see seniors, I see parents with strollers crossing this intersection and darting in between traffic that is moving at very high rates of speed, and I think it's just very dangerous and unsustainable as this continues to grow. So a safer crossing would make it easier for hundreds of nearby households to walk to the Y, just like we do all the time, and it would help connect our trails. So I think this is a real opportunity to strengthen community connections in the area, and thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, I'm Fern Spence from Garfield Township. I don't need to repeat what they just said, because they all said what I had written down to say. But I do want to add that I did a walking audit for Safe Routes to School years ago at that corner of Wyatt and South, and, sorry, Silver Lake Road, thank you, and also at Barnes and Silver Lake Road. And there are like over eight hundred households on that side of Silver Lake Road, and there's such an attraction of the YMCA. So it just makes good sense. I think we can all agree that having a safe, comfortable, inviting, visible crossing, especially at Wyatt and Silver Lake, would make a lot of sense. So I just want to give you my feedback on that. And also, I do bike from my home to the YMCA, and it is a little awkward right there at Wyatt and Silver Lake, and especially Barnes. It's very dangerous. I've had a lot of people call me who bike as well, a woman who lives on top of Wayne Hill, and she was really frustrated how vulnerable she is at these crossings. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Fern.
Hi, I'm Dr. Doug Spence, live at six-five-eight Old Incachi Farm Trail in Garfield Township. I want to say, you know, how much I love the Y. I think it's such a great organization and love to support the plan to expand it. I am not so formal as to do walking audits, but I am on my bike all over Garfield Township all the time, and so the Y is a significant destination. I had a daughter who was at West Middle. It's interesting, getting her to go to the Y was a big drive for us, but she and her girlfriends actually felt a little uncomfortable going on the Buffalo Trail after school when they were by themselves as young girls, and I would see this as an opportunity for them to be able to be, you know, in a more public place, you know, right along the road, safely crossing from West Middle over, walking down this trail and crossing there. This is an opportunity to link so many trails that, you know, this would be just such a key link to, for the community. A quick study of, you know, the home values that come with an increased walkability score is something of interest to everybody here, too. And so that's something I would just like to promote for all those homeowners, their ability to walk to the Y and actually walk all the way to Orianna safely through Kids' Creek would be great. So thank you, and thank you for supporting. There was some mention of the trail along Airport Road. You know, just trails that go somewhere. I was near the crossing of Lowe's up into Orianna and headed south along Garfield, along US Thirty-One, and to realize that there was blacktop laid down for maybe a hundred yards, and then it just ended. So just, you know, significant efforts to support working with the airport to make that trail all the way to Costco happen, I just want to support as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Amy Hartzog, a trail planner with Tart Trails. I don't live in Garfield Township, but I frequent it often, and I'm also here just as a voice for the folks who weren't able to write a letter or who aren't here in person. Just, we hear a lot of input about connectivity in this area, and we're super supporters of the YMCA and their mission, and I think we are trying to accomplish similar things. Definitely a cornerstone in our community, super supportive of the expansion, it's well needed. If you've ever been there in an afternoon, it's difficult to, you know, there's just a sea of kids, and it's great that they have that opportunity, a safe place to stay, and I think Doug made a great point about kids and access, some being, considering it safer to cross Silver Lake at Wyatt Road rather than taking the Buffalo Ridge Trail because it's more of a corridor that eyes are off. But the more people on the trail, the safer it is. But with that, kids should be able to walk to the Y and then be able to walk home if they live across the road, and right now, they're not able to do that. And so as this beautiful Y, you know, expands, I hope there's some consideration for improving the biking and walking connectivity in this area. We're really supportive of the township's efforts to look at, I know it's in the CIP to do a study on extending the Buffalo Ridge Trail further south to South Airport. Hopefully, we'll make it all the way to Silver Lake Recreation Area. And there's also in the CIP, an opportunity to create a bike route along Wyatt, connecting to West Chester Commons, and then connecting into the Meadow Valley complex that will get you to the high school. And so you have some great things that are culminating, but there's this one part that's really, needs to, a nut that needs to be cracked, and that's the crosswalk at Wyatt. And we've heard from Patty, and I think that Phil is going to be speaking soon, and they've expressed just how many times they've seen close calls, so I hope you can consider this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Good evening. Philip Hamburg, four-two-three-seven Summer Hill Road. I support the YMCA all the way. Speaking of a sea of children, what we're looking at in the enclosed area of Silver Lake and Frankie Road, four hundred and fifty Montessori students plus staff and parents. West Middle, a thousand plus, plus staff and parents. YMCA, correct me if I'm wrong, fifteen thousand plus. Not all of them are using West, but at least a couple thousand of them seem to be gravitating that way, probably better than half of that fifteen thousand. And then you've got Bay Ridge, three hundred residents plus staff and visitors. So fifty-five miles an hour with no way to dial up pedestrian safety is kind of crazy in this world of ours, and I urge you to dial in this important trail disconnect, which will serve the population of students in that immediate vicinity and the community at large. It's really an accident waiting to happen. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Is there anyone else out in the public that would like to step up and make a comment? Going once, going twice, all right. Thank you all for your comments. We'll bring it back to the Planning Commission. Well, what is everybody thinking? It seemed to have a lot of enthusiasm for the Y and a lot of enthusiasm for us to ask the applicant for some additional pedestrian connectivity.
I guess what, that's where I could use some clarification maybe from staff, is if we wanted to try to do some improvement of, or try to cause some improvement to happen through a trail crossing there, how does that get done and who pays for it, and who's responsible for doing it or allowing it or vetting it?
So they, like Steve mentioned, you can add a prior example on La Fragne Road, a little bit different situation, but generally is similar in a lot of respects. The jurisdiction of the road, Silver Lake Road, is under the Grand Traverse County Road Commission, so they would be the entity that would, could permit something there. Now, one of the things that we, in the case of the La Fragne Road crossing, that was, we had the cooperation of both Beta through their plan unit development process, and then through Ridge Forty-Five through their special use permit process, where essentially they were going to be both supporting that and kind of meeting in the middle. We did have conversations with the road commission. There was a study that was done by Beta, by Progressive AE, that studied that crossing that identified where the crossing should go. They felt that there was a gap, there was concerns about crossing on a road like La Fragne, but they determined that there was sufficient gaps in the traffic to allow for crossing, so that there could be an established crossing at that location. There was a design done by the engineer for Ridge Forty-Five that would have their appropriate markings, signage, pavement, and so forth. So that was agreed upon, and it is a condition of both of those approvals. It hasn't happened yet. One of the things that Beta was concerned about the speed limits in that area, and so at this point, Beta requested the township board to make a request of the road commission to do a speed study at that location. In the case of La Fragne, it's a little bit different. It's a shorter roadway in terms of it's got, terminating essentially at Hammond Road there. It's a busy road, but the feeling there was that the speed limits, the speed limit right now in La Fragne is fifty-five. I think there's general feeling that should a speed study be established or done, conducted on that, that most likely the speed limit would come down, just because of the amount of cars on there and the amount of residential along there, turning movements and so forth. I think something of that approach would make most sense here, that, I'm not suggesting that there'd be a speed study, I don't know, but certainly conversation with the road commission on the likelihood of permitting and how this potentially would go in terms of if it was designed and permitted, how would that actually work? In the case of the La Fragne crossing, that it was felt that to start with would be just doing a basic crossing, but could warrant like a rapid flashing beacon should there be more activity. I think that's one of the things that was helpful by having the Progressive AE study that was done by, on behalf of Beta, because it really kind of established what would be best in terms of the designing for that location and that it was warranted. The whole mindset of that crossing on La Fragne was that there was the, as part of Beta's improvements there, it was more than just their facility in terms of their main headquarters, but to the north there where this crossing is required to go in is where they were putting their transit. So the idea that that transit center there was essentially a place where commuters could go there, park, and then take a bus for kind of the last mile into the city. But it was the feeling also that because that location is there, has the potential to attract a lot of the existing residents that are on the west side of La Fragne, between not just Ridge Forty-Five, but you have King's Court. We calculated potentially the number of people in there, it's roughly about two thousand residents, that could, you know, cross that road, La Fragne, to get to the transit center too, because it was not just for commuters, but for people using that to gain access to part of the whole Beta transit system. So that was the mindset there. Certainly, we had the cooperation of the applicants that were, you know, recognized the value of that and the importance of providing a safe crossing at that location. So some similarities definitely in this case. I think what really helped in that particular case was to have a meeting to discuss the, we had the road commission present, the property owners in terms of the Beta and Ridge Forty-Five, along with the township, and kind of facilitated that discussion, and at least evaluated the feasibility of that. From that meeting came out of the study that was done by Progressive AE to determine the feasibility of it. I think in, one of the things that, you know, in a special use permit or other development applications, we do have the ability to require traffic impact reports. Now, this isn't necessarily a traffic impact report, but it does kind of same, it has similar aspects of it, that there is a infrastructure that's built there currently for non-motorized. Certainly, this is a community resource and a place where people are trying to access it. And so I would say it would at least need to have some type of discussion by the applicant, by the road commission, to see what the feasibility is and evaluate it after that.
Molly?
So are you suggesting that we make this application contingent on coming to some kind of solution on West Silver Lake Road, tying the two together, or leave them separate? And, I mean, there are a lot of people who could put a lot of pressure on the road commission to move quickly if we do it that way, or leave them separate and have a commitment from everybody to go ahead and try to work to a solution. Which way would you think?
Well, I think at this point, it would be helpful, like, kind of using that example that we had on La Fragne, to at least have that conversation and see what options are out there. And I understand that it's a little bit different situation with the Y, they're on, you know, there's a fundraising campaign, there's limitations in terms of what they can do, but at least it kind of got us to figure out whether it's even, if it's even feasible or not. I think that's part of the important, because it's not just the financial cost to construct a facility there, it's like, does this, is this a safe location to establish one? And I think that's where the review and the input and discussion from the road commission is kind of critical to that. So it's really just evaluating it from that standpoint, too, and then also see what options are out there to have it constructed.
See, the applicant's engineer, Bob Verchave, stepped up to the podium.
Yeah, I just want to, yeah, Bob Verchave with Gosling Zuback, engineer for the YMCA on this project, as you know. Just wanted to be ready to field any questions and kind of have this discussion with you. But I think from the Y's standpoint, I guess, any, I don't want to speak for them, but I think they're supportive of the whole connectivity and trail system that's in the area, but I think conditions related to a crossing that's not part of our project is, I think there's a little bit of a issue there. I think, you know, they're likely open to discussions, but I just want to get out in front that, you know, they are fundraising, they're working towards, you know, the construction, they're, you know, having a construction manager onboard now for the project, you know, when it's ready to go. So I think there's, holding it up with conditions related to this crosswalk could be an issue that, you know, for them. I guess, from my perspective as an engineer, I think the Safe Routes to School program kind of missed the boat on that whole connection, because, I mean, the Y's been there, it was there when that study was being done to provide that sidewalk. So it's disappointing to see that, you know, they missed the opportunity to make that connection or study it.
Did the Y reach out at that time and say, hey, let's add that connection in?
No, why didn't the Safe Routes to School folks, you know, bring the Y to the table for that grant and study that was linking the neighborhood to the school?
Sure. Do you guys remember any of the details of that?
It was prior to my time here.
And I don't have any recollection. I guess, my question, Bob, and, sorry.
Andrew.
Andrew, thank you. My question to both of you would be, you know, I respect the desire to not delay the project. Certainly, I'm very respectful of the fact that any kind of, you know, continued delay to try and resolve this issue, which could take weeks or months, is unnecessarily burdensome and frankly costly to your development program. But what if we were to ask that you, as part of the approval, have a condition to pursue a crossing with the road commission? And if it was determined that a study was necessary, certainly the cost of a study ought to be covered by whatever delays would otherwise be created if we said, well, wait a second, we got a, we got a resolution. a second, we got to, we got to resolve this before we move on. So if you were to commit to work with the road commission and any other parties to resolve and trying to address the issue of pedestrian connectivity, and then to, if a study was appropriate, to fund a study to determine if there was a correct location. And then, I think I'm hearing from John, that, you know, the similar situation we were looking at, which hasn't been executed yet, but the intent was to put in a painted crosswalk and then signage with the next level of infrastructure being just a blinking light, notifying, was that just a, what kind of blinking light would that be?
Well, no, it was like a rapid flashing beacon, so that's similar to, I mean, that's where the traffic engineers would have to weigh in on that.
Right, right.
That would be something similar to like what you might find like on Eighth Street. But I don't, you know, that's, that's why I say, part of this is obviously finance, you know, timing, all that, but also the other part is the actual design. Like, in, is it, does it meet criteria for the road engineers, traffic engineers?
Right, and if they said, no, you can't do this, then I guess you guys would be off the hook. But, you know, I'm looking at it in terms of, you know, I, I respect what you're saying, Bob, that, you know, hey, gosh, the Safe Routes to School missed the boat by not extending all the way to the Y. I don't know why they didn't. But I do know that if this was a brand new YMCA development from scratch, and we had that, and we had had that pathway ending where it is, we would have said, hey, the Y's going to have to connect as part of the Y's infrastructure that they need to provide to develop the lot. So this is an opportunity when you're asking to change your special use permit, to request that you respond to the changing conditions. And I guess what I'm suggesting is at least pursue and seek out an opportunity to provide a low-cost connectivity. So what are your thoughts on that approach?
Well, first off, I think what John had mentioned, this is very fundraising sensitive. We have worked very, very hard to raise the dollars that we need to raise to commence with construction. Our goal was to get to 60 or 65% of the total cost. As you can imagine, when we hired the construction manager, cost savings were implemented based upon the timing of that construction. So you want to avoid winter conditions. If this was, precluded us from starting when we'd like to start, which we're, you know, we're aiming for, you know, April or May of next year, where the facility would then be completed by April, May of '27, you know, that could, it's just a very difficult climate to raise money. We're obviously doing this expansion for the community, we're in full support of this, of this crosswalk. But I would just hope it wouldn't be contingent on the approval. We have a couple of year, you know, a year and a half, so to speak, before we'd actually have the facility up and going, or at least the expansion up and going. But there are cost implications to that if it's delayed, based upon what we're hearing from our construction managers and architects and that sort of thing. So as I said, we're fully supportive of that. I would hope we'd be allowed to move forward with the project, understanding that we would cooperate and do whatever we could do to help assist in that regard. A cost, costs would be, have to be something we'd have to consider, depending upon what was determined. But if we delay the project in any way, it's, I mean, I think everybody knows this, the longer you wait for construction materials and everything else goes up, so we've worked very, very hard to target our start date in the spring of next year, and if that gets delayed, that's going to make it very difficult for us to, you know, get the project going at the time we would like to get it going.
So at this point, you're approximately 18 months from hoping to open the doors?
Yeah, so we're going to begin construction. We have a little bit of money that we need to raise yet, so we've got to be careful about that, but I'm very confident that we're going to do that. And we are hoping that we'll start construction in April or May. It's a 12-month construction project. And the thing I want to emphasize too, is that this is just, this is the gymnasium of the facility that was initially intended, and they didn't have the money to build the gymnasium. We've now been able to do that. So this was by its very nature intended to be a gymnasium in the space that it's in now. But we would hope, if everything goes well according to construction, that we would be opening our doors in April or May of 2027. But to just emphasize again, as a nonprofit organization that has, we made the commitment, as an, I often tell people, this is not a Y project. This is a project for the community that the Y is obligated to provide. We're meeting needs within this community, and this is something that we have, we have the expertise, we've got the facilities, we have the, the membership. I appreciate all the positive comments. We're just in a very good position right now to provide what is an absolute necessity for this community. And if that gets delayed from a construction perspective, that could inhibit our ability to deliver it the way we want to. But we have, you know, if I'm doing my math right, we have 17 to 18 months before those doors would be open.
John?
I don't think there would be anything here that would cause a delay. I, you know, I, so.
Do you have a suggestion for condition?
I, I mean, obviously, right now, you're just going through a public hearing process, so findings of fact would be next month, but I guess, I would think that what we would be looking for is just, you know, cooperation in some of those discussions, because I don't think we have all the information in front of us. So I think, you know, for instance, is it even feasible from a traffic engineering standpoint, that type of thing? But I think certainly just the cooperation would be a starting point, and then we can follow up with that with some conversations to, you know, to find out what options are out there. Not just in, you know, looking at design, possibility, issues related to speed, you know, what would be involved in all of that, and obviously, you know, financial resources, you know, if it, you know, maybe it comes out to where, you know, the Y's providing the ability to connect onto their property, to connect to that existing pathway, you know, maybe there are other funding sources that could be applied. It's one of those things that we don't really know until we kind of dive into it a little bit more.
Okay.
So, but I think certainly cooperation, I think, would be the first step, and I don't think anything has to happen tonight. I think that's something that if we have some meetings and try to see what the feasibility and options are available for this, then we can kind of see when we come back in December.
John?
So who initiates, and how quickly could somebody initiate this conversation with the road commission that may not have ever heard of this request yet? Or maybe they've heard about it for years and we don't know about it?
Well, I mean, I think that's something that we could as staff. I mean, you know, one of this, when we look at special use permits, there's criteria, and one of the criteria says, adequate measures shall be taken to provide vehicular and pedestrian traffic within the site and really, and in relation to streets and sidewalks servicing the site in a safe and convenient manner. So, I mean, we're trying to, you know, work with the applicant to kind of achieve that goal there, and I think we'd be willing to facilitate that and see what options are out there. It seems like it's a gap that should be able to be filled somehow, but we have to remember it's also a road under the jurisdiction of the road commission. There are certain parameters that they operate under that were, you know, even if we were to have the money today, it still doesn't mean that it would happen from a traffic engineering standpoint. So it's something we just need to investigate and then report back.
Molly?
So you, you think that, in my personal opinion, TART and the schools need to be number one out there trying to get this situation cleared up better than what it is right now. We have all those students that are coming, they're using the Y. The Y is not a, it's not funded by a millage, it doesn't, it has to just depend on its, on its members. So I like that approach. Let's go ahead, let's, let's see if we can get some people together. And if you think the township is the one who needs to do it, you know, get TART, get the school people in there. They should be helping with this too. These are their students that are going there after school and probably eliminating after school projects that they don't have to have because they're at the Y. So.
And I would just again emphasize that we fully support this. I think the YMCA obviously is going to be on the side of safety, there's no question about that, and we love the fact that there's pedestrian traffic. I mean, we have a connection to the Buffalo Trail behind the facility, so we've always been as accommodating as we can possibly be, and that obviously remains our stance. But again, timing is everything with, with this project. It is a relatively large project at 12 and a half million dollars, and that could easily be increased if there's delays.
I mean, yeah, and again, I don't think there would be any, I mean, if, approval can go forward, I mean, there are, there are conditions that are applied to approvals, it depends on how that condition is worded. I would hope that we could at least have some idea for you back considering this at a subsequent meeting. I don't think it would entail any delay in, in terms of the review of this board.
And I would add to that, my thought, and I'd be looking to the commission for nods, but if there's agreement, my thought would be that we're, no intent to delay the YMCA's project moving forward, but that with the finding of fact, if staff could come back with some additional information that you're able to glean between now and December, and then as appropriate, correctly, appropriately worded conditions that require the YMCA, which I know that they already are, but it's just our appropriate due diligence to make sure that they're engaged in the process as an applicant, and then also any appropriate texts that would require that they provide some funding, obviously, probably within some reasonable limits. I mean, I'm not expecting to see a fully signalized intersection there or something like that. But, you know, I think that, I think that the interest, our interest is to see the project go forward and, and hopefully have this issue resolved with some more improved crossing by the time the doors open.
Kara?
So I'm struggling with this because I see the complexity in the fact that the road commission has jurisdiction of the roadway, the Y is a nonprofit fundraising to make this happen, and the site expansion, if you, I can't remember the exact numbers on parking spaces, the number of increased parking spaces, but if you think about pedestrian traffic and you make the assumption that whatever number of parking spaces you're expanding by, you're anticipating all traffic increases at the same rate, right? And I'm hearing from the community that it's already an unsafe situation, so I have real concerns about moving forward with a project where we know we're going to increase those unsafe situations. I would also say, yeah, I think that partnership is important and we should get all the players at the table, but neither TART nor the school district necessarily has the same level of funds, it's going to probably have to be everybody chipping in together. But I, you know, this isn't the first time we've heard comments on this area, and I think it needs to be addressed if we're looking at an expansion that's going to increase traffic to that facility.
So in that context, Kara, are you comfortable with what I propose, that staff seeks to condition the approval so that there's engagement?
Yes, and I like the idea of leveraging staff involvement towards the road commission. I think that's really helpful.
Okay.
We can reach out to the road commission. We don't know their availability, but the sooner the better, and if we are able to hear from them as soon as possible, I'm sure this is not the first time they've heard about this intersection, and if we don't hear from them, they also have public meetings that the public can attend as well. But I do think, bringing them all to the table, we mentioned the Ridge 45 example, because as John was pointing out, one of those criteria for a special use permit, Ridge also being a special use permit, went through that same criteria, so it was probably similar language, they can be modified or adapted. And like, in terms of funding, I actually would also want to revisit, since it was before my time, the Safe Routes to School application. One, was this mentioned, or two, can we apply for a future Safe Routes to School, is this an eligible project? Is that funding available? Now that I'm engaged in the world of grant applications, to investigate that, to see if this was ever discussed at that time, or if there's a future application that could be made. I think that's probably the information that we can bring back by December, there's details that we probably won't have. Me just looking at this map is figuring out which side of Y do you cross?
Well, we look forward to seeing that in December.
Exactly, yeah.
Any other comments, concerns, or are we ready to make a motion?
Chair, I'll make the motion to direct staff to prepare findings of fact for application SUP 2006-02-D submitted by Gosling Zuback Engineering Services, Inc. for a special use permit for addition to an existing recreational facility at 3700 Silver Lake Road, parcel 0501602510 for review at the regular planning commission meeting on December 9, 2025. Do you have any additions for this discussion?
Correction, I think that should be December 10.
Oh, was I looking at the town board agenda when we prepared the staff report?
It should be December 10, it's your next regular meeting, not December 9.
Thanks, John.
Good catch.
All right, I'll make that change, then we'll just proceed as far as this application is concerned. Is that right, or you want to add more?
All four.
Want to duke it out? All right, we have a motion by Agustinelli, support by Robertson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same? Motion passes. Thank you, Bob and Andrew, appreciate your understanding. All right, with that, we will move on to public hearing, PD 2025-130, Smith Brothers rezoning request, public hearing.
Look over this one, find it on the map. Since Smith Brothers, oh, excuse me. Smith Brothers' property is at 2151 Cass Road, just north of Hartman, on the west side of Cass. The property, which is highlighted, is currently split zoned. Looks like it was one's, two parcels about the size of the one to the north of it. One is owned local commercial, one is owned limited industrial, proposals to make the entire thing limited industrial. The future land use map, the master plan does identify this as industrial and is kind of the character of Castro generally, and this site at least has appeared used as industrial in its recent past. A lot of the staff report kind of goes over, was present in the introduction, goes over the master plan, the zoning plan, zoning of the current and surrounding sites, future land use of the current and, or the subject and surrounding sites. Property also butts up to Miller Creek Nature Reserve, which is township parkland. One comment we did want to make was that this does border the TCAP's Saban Data Center to the south. We did both reach out to TCAPs, they received both the public hearing notice, and we also reached out to their facilities director. We did not receive any comments from them, we wanted to at least make that offer to them since they are a property owner that directly abuts it and want to know just what their future plans are, but we did not receive anything from them. So, otherwise, just had some general comments on what would be the eight factors to consider if this were to move to findings of fact and a draft motion for findings of fact. There's also a public hearing if anyone is here for.
Any staff questions or concerns before we open, I'm sorry, not staff, commission member questions or concerns?
Just a quick question, the creek that's referenced in here, I looked on some overhead maps and on the Eagle Wetlands viewer, and it didn't look like there's any part of the eastern portion of the parcel that's denoted as wetlands, but can you tell us anything about that creek and whether it's?
I think it crosses like in the middle of the site that's currently, and this was one of the crossings of it, and this one was another one. I think any future development would need to, since it would essentially redevelop the site, need to acknowledge, probably more so than the previous developments, would have had to acknowledge.
When I was looking at it.
Yeah, so being a rezoning, this did not have a development review. Yeah, um, so, being a rezoning, uh, this did not have a development review, uh, attached to it, but any future development review would have to take that into consideration. Uh, I don't know if that was, if it's like a branch of Miller Creek, um, because Miller Creek kind of empties more closer to the Y's south building in Borbman Valley, um, but like a branch of it, uh, connected, since our parkland's right on the other side of it. Uh, good question, though.
Should we go ahead and open up the public hearing? All right, call the public meeting open. Anybody have any comments regarding the application at hand? Uh, please step forward, state your name, address, and make your comment. Seeing no one rushing to the podium, we'll go ahead and, uh, unless there's anybody who's maybe twitching, nope, we'll close the public hearing-
All right.
-and, uh, open up the planning commission for a discussion. I guess what we're looking for is just a recommendation for a finding of fact, seems fairly straightforward. Staff's prepared a pretty good report, but, uh, any thoughts or questions?
The previous one also talked about, uh, non-motorized, just to comment on this. Uh, another reason to, it would be really good to hear from TCAP's is our own non-motorized plan talks about a connection between, I'll actually put the parks layer on here, between, uh, Miller Creek and, uh, Miller Creek Nature Reserve and Borbman Valley, uh, the township has, uh, I believe, an easement in place on Dairy Square. Uh, this would also necessitate a crossing, that would involve talking with the road commission, uh, but if there were a future facility, it would run pretty much along the border of this, uh, subject property, so, uh, to also know if that is part of TCAP's plan to, uh, would they be supportive, do they have other plans for this property that would, uh, prohibit that, uh, but since we just talked about non-motorized in the last public hearing, I thought I'd bring that up.
Well, would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to direct staff to, or, a motion to direct staff to, to draft findings of fact for review at the December tenth, twenty-twenty-five regular meeting of the planning commission for application Z twenty-twenty-five dash zero two, submitted by James Smith to rezone the parcel zero five, zero two two, zero one nine, zero zero, located at twenty-one fifty-one Cass Road, from its current split zoning of CL, local commercial, and IL, limited industrial, to IL, limited industrial.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Robertson, support by Racine, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, any opposed, same? Motion passes.
Thank you so much.
Hmm? All right. I think we are, uh, back up to item number nine then, or down to item number nine. It's, uh, one more opportunity for public comment. If any, uh, public would like to step up to the podium and make any general comments, feel free to do so now.
Tricia Bauer, excuse me, four-two-three-seven Summer Hill, I would just like to thank you for your attention to the details about the crossing and for the Y, but I would just like to say that I hope that we can move faster than eighteen months before we have some safer crossings in place for our community. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your comment. All right, with that, we'll, uh, close the last opportunity for public comment, and let's see, items for next agenda, agenda, December tenth, twenty-twenty-five, uh, we're gonna discuss the zoning ordinance, uh, proposed amendment mixed-use neighborhood, and have a public hearing for that, uh, and we're gonna discuss food trucks draft language review, and are there any expectations? That'll be a, not a, um, um, what do we call this meeting?
It would just be-
Study session?
Thank you, that one. That won't be a study session, that'll be a regular meeting.
Well, it is a regular meeting, so that one, like, and the food trucks one, we'll see where we're at, because I know some of these things are gonna be coming back to you, for instance, uh, if you look at the agenda tonight, High Tops will be coming back to you, um, Olson's moves on, Airport Gateway moves on for the time being, but then you'll have your, uh, YMCA findings of fact, Smith Brothers findings of fact, and then you have a public hearing for the dual-road conditional rezoning request, so, don't want to stack up a bunch of things, uh, again, for you, uh, but, uh, so that one, we will see, uh, it's not ready to, uh, you know, there's draft language for a zoning ordinance amendment to that, but there's also police power and stuff, so, we may at this point kind of push that off to January and maybe look at, uh, see how that works out, we don't want to overpower you with too many things on your agenda at once, particularly since there are, you have no study sessions this month.
Right, and we get our study session back in January at that point, so, um, and we also got, uh, one more application, uh, in, uh, as well, so we'll have an introduction, uh, for a property on Y-Song Road, uh, most likely, we're doing a completeness review right now, but, um, there's that, uh, there's also, um, putting the, uh, setting the twenty-twenty-six meeting schedule will be on that agenda, um, uh, since it is only eight o'clock, like, personally, I am very excited that we get to go home, uh, at eight instead of nine, uh-
We will if you quit talking.
So, since we are setting that schedule, uh, if people want us, if you want to do it at six, uh, we certainly can, but also it, uh, uh, we have had them at seven, and that sort of is ingrained in our brains that it's gonna be at seven, so-
I don't know, Joe and I might have a hard time getting it at six.
Yeah.
Remember, I make the motion to change it to five.
Oh!
I vote nay.
Two, uh, two things with that, uh, which we will, we'll talk about that more at that, um, we always do a, typically a joint meeting, uh, we've done it in February or March, so, uh, that would be proposed, and regardless of whether all the meetings go to six, we've usually done that one at six, at the very latest. Um, and then, the November meeting next year, uh, Karen pointed out that it would be on Veterans Day, uh, so if we want to move that to its own date, also since we don't have a study session, that might be a out-of-typical-order, uh, meeting date, but we looked ahead, uh, it does not conflict with any conferences, we already have the dates for the twenty-twenty-six conference, we don't have to move it for that, um, but we'll bring the, uh, draft schedule, uh, as well.
Very good, we can discuss it at that time.
All right.
Anything else?
I'll make a motion when you adjourn.
We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.